All right, it's six o'clock. So, I want to welcome everybody to the back. August 31st, 2017, regular meeting of Guyman City Council. This time, I'd like to ask Pastor Gary Holden at the Victory Memorial Nine Mist Church come up and give a city invocation. Preach.
Well, thank you for this opportunity. As of tomorrow, I will be officially retired, so this may be the last opportunity I have to speak before such a distinguished group of gentlemen. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you today for the many blessings of life, the blessings of living in this community, the blessings of an open government that is responsive to the citizens and to the people of this community. We pray, first of all, for protection for our city employees who are even at this moment down in Texas, helping people in the catastrophe of Hurricane Harvey, and we pray for their families back here as well. We pray that you would be with them and protect them and help them as they serve the bigger community of our country. Now, Lord, be with us as they make decisions, and again, we thank you for your love and grace in our lives, and we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Mr. Freiberg will begin the prayers.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call this meeting order. Agenda item number two, this is attendance roll call.
Peterson.
Here.
Swager.
Here.
Cron.
Here.
Alvedres.
Here.
Livinggood.
Here.
Hawkins.
Mr. Mitchell.
Here.
Mr. Petty.
Here.
I'm going to interject public comments and announcements since we're starting with the city council tonight. One I have, Boone, are you ready? Do you have your film? Do we have that?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Well, there's going to be some pictures coming out. And we've had two city employees that took it upon themselves to do a project at Oklahoma Park, painting picnic tables and the toys and the rides and all that. And nobody asked them to do it. They did. They did an exceptional job. In fact, a couple of weeks ago, I lived down by there, and I drove by, and I thought, gosh, we've got some new equipment, and I didn't know about it. So anyway, I want to extend my thanks and the council's thanks to Marissa Gonzalez and Amber Chavez for taking that on and doing such a good job. And I've got a little something for you. It's something for me. It's not from, you know, they can take credit. But we didn't make any plaques. We didn't make any signs. We didn't do any of that fancy stuff. But I got something in an orange envelope for you all if you come out. You know, the significant thing, ladies, is that anybody in Guyman can volunteer and take a project on, talk to our staff or park people, whatever, and they'll love you and teach you a bit. So, thank you.
Thank you.
The second thing is, stay tuned to the media tomorrow. Dr. Fulton, no PSU's going to have a big announcement tomorrow afternoon. It's a teaser, that's all I'm going to tell you. Tonight's their home opener at Pan Am State. They're playing, what team are they playing?
Mc Murray.
Mc Murray State.
Mc Murray.
So anyway, if we get done, head to Goodwill, you can watch the game.
Warhawks.
Warhawks. And, by the way, Mr. Alvedres and Mr. Livinggood are both alumnus of the OPSU football team. Some more outstanding than the other. And Mrs. Hawkins is representing the city of Guyman tonight. She is a member of Class 31 of Oklahoma Leadership Oklahoma. She's in We Woka, and this weekend is the campout for their first year. So I think she was really looking forward. She's a camper. Any other public comments and announcements? Okay. Agenda item number three is approval of consent. Agenda item number four, the approval of consent agenda.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and second.
Cron.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five eyes.
Agenda item number five is presentation of monthly activities and financial report by Artist Incubation. Y'all going to flip or just send somebody else?
Hello. I'm Hope Ramon. I'm employed full-time by Artist Incubation's All Fired Up. This is my first time ever speaking, so if I don't make sense, I apologize now. Artist Incubation is consulting with Dr. Dinger for a potential gallery director and training program, which will be a two-year program to be certified by OPSU BP Academic Affair. Date to be determined. Also, Artist Incubation employs part-time employee Melanie Lentz in this program as well. Project still in the works. Track lighting. We are currently waiting on the contractor, but all the plans have been finalized. Dinner on the Lake promotion has been launched. If you haven't got your tickets, we still have a few available. Finished is the fire inspection, and we are completely in compliance. The licensed kitchen project voted by the board, and we receive instruction by Degree Culinary Chef in Oklahoma Department of Commerce. Events and revenue. Development of website release day approximately September 15th of this year. Art supplies for OPSU back-to-school, launching efforts to increase volume of business for Artists, Inc. Summer art camps, June through August. OAC grant file report filed, waiting on funding now. Dinner on the Lake is September 16th. Harrah's Festival, part of Guyman's Art and Humanities Program, we will be participating on marketing. On deck for this quarter, we will be purchasing standing banners for events and trade shows. Updating on sign for Dinner on the Lake. Our e-newsletter is also currently finished and done. If you're not on our email list, please let me know. Consistent use of city logos for marketing and promotions. I personally have distributed all art at brochures to local businesses and area hotels. We currently have sold a painting through social media to Montana, and it was shipped out and collected sales tax. And thank you for your continued support.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you. We're going to switch number six and seven around. Agenda item number seven, discussion of possible actions on approval of ordinance number 822-A. Sign ordinance regulating and controlling the design, construction, installation, alteration, repair, location, removal, and operation of signs within the city of Guyman. Providing for the issue of permits, repealing Appendix 1 of the Guyman zoning ordinance, repealing all ordinance and parts of the ordinance in conflict here with, providing for severability, and declaring an emergency. I think all of you have had a copy of the ordinance. We've had some public hearings, so, Mr. Croft.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Your Honor, members of the council. You've had this ordinance in one form or another since late July on July 25th. Since that time, we have had a public hearing. We've given comments, copies to the Chamber of Commerce, met with the sign company in town. We have sought public opinion, and this is the product before you today. And I think just as simple as it's before you, you have it, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you, or offer any clarifications that you might have.
What type of feedback did you get from the public?
Actually, we didn't really get that many. We only, the public hearing that we had was attended by Commissioner Cron, Councilman Cron, and he was the only one who attended. We have talked to the Pete Signs. He had a couple of questions about the fee schedule, and that was it. And once I explained it to him, he was fine. I've talked to him, I have talked to him twice. I have talked to all the planning commissioners, one-on-one. They also were sent a copy of the ordinance. The only, I had two comments back from one planning commissioner, and one had a question about the front setback for an onsite sign. After I heard that from him, I drove around and decided he had a good point. So we changed the front setback from an on-premise sign to 15 feet from the right-of-way from the leading edge of the sign. The only other comment, again, was on the fee schedule. Some people thought we were better off with just a flat fee schedule. I thought a sliding one was a little bit better, just to be a little bit more fair depending upon the cost of the sign.
What would you, how would you answer individuals and people's concerns? We've got along without assigned ordinance for 18 years. Why do we need one?
I think there's a couple of reasons for that. One is, is that we are looking to go to a unified municipal code. This is the first step, and that is mandated by the comprehensive plan that we just did earlier this year. Secondly, we really don't have assigned ordinance today. Part of it is in the BOKA standards, in the zoning ordinance. Part of it is in the building code. Part of it is in other parts of the municipal code. So for the first time, we will have all the signed criteria in one place for the public to know what it is they're supposed to do when they want to have a sign. And it gives us a framework for the first time to accept a permit, have standards to review it, approve or deny, or approve with conditions, so we can keep signs from being in the right-of-way, so we can, in the long term, have less clutter. In the long term, have a better street scene down 54, 4, 12 in our major arterials. I think there's also an economic development component to this as well. I think if we have a sign code in place and a better, cleaner-looking street scene, I think we have a chance to attract more business to the city. So that's why I think we need to do it.
Thank you. Any other questions? Another one comment after this one is, we have the non-conforming legal signs listed in the ordinance, so if it's an existing sign, but it fits criteria of being in good condition, et cetera, and so forth, we're going to let it stand until it needs to be replaced or falls out of those conditions.
That's correct. An example of that would be the Brahms Ice Cream Cone sign. That sign is too high according to the new standards. But that sign can remain as it is. They can change the lettering on the marquee. They could keep using that for as long as they want to, but let's say in the future should Dairy Queen come in, and they want to take that over and have a new sign, that sign would have to be removed, and the Dairy Queen sign would have to be 30 feet width, 150 square feet of area. But not until that time would it need to be removed. If they wanted to enlarge it, or make it taller, or alter it in some way, then it would have to be to meet the standards of the new code. But it could sit there for, right now, as long as they want, and they will have to do nothing.
Have you had any questions from the public, or anybody bring up that the government's trying to put in too many regulations, and who's going to enforce this?
No, actually, actually, we've had the opposite. We have had, we've had some comments that this is a good start, you know, and we will have a framework in place. And then we can see, six months, a year from now, how this works. And if there is something that we need to tweak, if there's something that we need to look at again, we will bring it back to you, and we'll, you know, we'll evaluate it and correct it. So I would say we've had the opposite, that people want to have a framework for, so they know what to do.
Any other questions? Discussion? Have a motion.
Before.
Make a motion that we approve ordinance number 822, sign ordinance number seven.
Second.
Have a motion and second.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Cron.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five eyes.
Thanks, sir. Agenda item numbers.
Emergency.
Emergency. Yes, I did before you make a motion on the fee schedule.
We need to do an emergency.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Have a motion.
Make a motion, we declare an emergency. Second.
Have a motion and second.
Swager.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Cron.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five eyes.
Okay, now we'll go to agenda item number seven, discussion and action on approval of Resolution Number 17-12-A, resolution adopting the schedule for fees for sign.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd just like to make one amendment. I went back through this the last couple of days, and I think we'll do better if we take off the last one where the cost of sign is $50,001 and above. If we take that one out and make that a $250 flat fee, it will actually make more sense. So I would ask you to, so we would amend it, 25 is fine, 50 or a percent and a half, 75 or 0.5% of the sign cost, and delete the last criteria. It'll just make it a little more fair.
Okay. Any questions? You got that written down? There you go. Any questions?
I calculated, I calculated the cost of a 60,000-square-foot sign, and it just didn't come out quite right. So I think the best thing to do is to get rid of that and make the sliding scale up to 50, and then after that, a flat 250.
Any discussion? Have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 17-12-A, with the exception of the last cost sign of anything over $50,000, $50,001, be just a flat rate of $250.
Second.
Have a motion and second.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Cron.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five eyes.
I thank you for your consideration, and thank you for your approval.
Agenda item number eight is discussion of possible action on acceptance of the Cultural District Development Reimbursement Grant from the Oklahoma Arts Council for the Guyman Area Arts and Humanities.
Yes, this is the second grant that we are going to receive through the Arts Council, and Josh has been helping me through the process. So Josh, if you'd like to make some comments about the grant?
Yes, we met all the criteria and deadlines for the first-year grant, and so they've offered more money this time around. It's a $4,000 matching grant, which means we come up with 4,000. OAC sends us 4,000. And we, essentially, a majority of this money, they want to see us spending on marketing, marketing our downtown events, our culture, and also our retailers that we have in the area. What you're handing out is part of what you'll see in the brochures that'll be going out in the five-state area that have been printed, and that was what was used with a majority of last year's grant money. Again, they don't, they frown on us using it specifically for artists. They frown on us using the grant money specifically for events. They want to see us using a majority of this grant money on promoting what we have in our area. And I think, from talking to the members of the Oklahoma Arts Council, the reason they're so interested in helping out Guyman is because we're in a particular area where we can bring in out-of-state revenue, and that's something that they really like to see. So we have already asked to be put on the agenda and filled out the application for convention and tourism to ask for the matching funds, which is what we did last year. So, but right now, I wanted to make sure that you guys are in the know. We're here to answer any questions that you guys have, and I just wanted to make sure that you guys are caught up on everything that's going on. And also, if something happens with convention and tourism, we're not blindsiding you guys with anything in the future. So if there's any questions, feel free.
Great-looking man.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is really good.
This is just a, in fact, a simile of the actual article. We still haven't gotten them all printed yet, but it's a, kind of like a six-fold large map that's Dwasi paper. On the back, we have explanations that go into more detail of the different areas in the cultural district, just giving more specific descriptions about the type of businesses, galleries, events that we hold on a regular basis, like Harvest Fest, Pioneer Days, and some other specifics. So what you're looking at there is just the map that outlines the cultural district, but it's a little bit more of an evolved way of communicating, because it's also bilingual as well. So as soon as we get the final copies back from the printers, we will be happy to bring these down to the chamber and to City Hall for you guys to look at.
And everything is in English and in Spanish, all the information is. We packed it all on that brochure, which is why it's humongous, but we did high-quality paper, so that way people aren't, oh, this is a nice brochure, and throw it in the trash. They're thinking, oh, this is a nice brochure, and it has a map inside of it. Maybe I'll keep this for the next time I'm in Guyman. And the design work was done by Ashley Ortiz and some of us helping out, but a majority of it was done by her, so I want to give her credit for that. I'm not trying to take any credit here.
Any questions? Discussion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the acceptance of the Cultural District Development Reimbursement Grant for the Oklahoma Arts Council for the Guyman Area Arts and Humanities.
Second.
Have a motion and second.
Cron.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five eyes.
Agenda item number nine is discussion of possible action on selecting design consultant for the Guyman Soccer Complex and directing the city manager into, to enter into contract negotiations with the selected firm. The staff report, and you've got some additional information today, I think.
Thank you, Your Honor. After you gave us permission to do the RFP, we sent out the RFP to 12 different firms. We also advertised for responses as well. We received four responses. The staff report covers some. We had a committee, most of them are here this evening. Ms. Sanchez is here, as is the rest of us who sat on the committee except for Sally. And the recommendation in the report is fairly straightforward. We all met, we ranked them, one to four. That's in front of you. And the only thing that I would say is that it was unanimous decision. All of us reached the same conclusion independently and as a group. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
What did you see the difference between Kim Lee Horn and Hornback from Black, their proposal?
I think the biggest difference was the depth of their experience and their staff and their resources that they bring to the table. That was first. Second, they had more experience doing this kind of project than the number-two Hornbeak Blatt had. So it was depth of experience, not only generally, but also specific to designing this type of soccer park. I think the third thing is, part of their team that they had included a traffic engineer and an intrude, a traffic and parking person, and I think, as we get into this, I think that's going to be an important aspect of the project.
Thank you. Any other discussion, question? No, I'm going to direct this probably to Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Do you want us to have an option that we recommend number one, but that in case you don't, cannot agree on number one, we go to number two?
That certainly would be an option for you, and you could certainly agree with the staff recommendation and pick a second alternate in case we're unable to reach an agreement over contractual terms with the first contractor. That would be an option. Once we negotiate the contract, obviously, that contract will come back to the council's consideration and approval.
I'll make a motion that we accept the staff report, or recommendation, excuse me, lost my place here, to direct the city manager to enter into contract negotiations with Kim Lee Horn.
Second.
Have a motion and second.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Cron.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five eyes.
Thank you. This is a big step forward, and we're very excited about moving on. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 10 is discussion of possible action on declaring real property located at 325 Duke, McKinnon Edition, Lot 8, Block 2, and 910 North Academy, Funk Edition, Lot 2, Block 38, as surplus and establish a minimum price for site.
Yes, Mayor. The two lots in question are miscellaneous lots that the city's acquired for various reasons, and that we've been holding them for some time, mowing them every year, and we think that's to the point where we would like to declare them surplus and offer them for sale. I think the first lot, the one on Academy, probably has a little less value than the one on 325 Duke. Might make a suggestion that the minimum value or price for the one on Academy, maybe $2,000, and the one on Duke, $5,000. I think that's about what was accumulated in cost for those lots, but the city obviously ended up with them, and we think it's time we try to encourage someone to buy them from the city, and hopefully we get someone to consider putting a house or something on the property.
Okay. Any discussion, question?
Will you go out for bids on these?
Yes. We probably wouldn't go through the same process as we did for Milton property, but we will make them, we'll advertise them and make them available to the public.
Any other questions, discussion, motion?
I'll make a motion that we declare real property located at 325 Duke in McCain Edition and 910 North Academy in the Funk Edition as surplus and establish a minimum price for the Duke property of $5,000 and the Academy property $2,000.
I'll second.
Have a motion and second.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Livinggood.
Aye.
Swager.
Aye.
Cron.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We have five eyes.
Agenda item number 11 is discussion, discussion of possible action on declaring Guattusi Longhorn cross bulls as surplus and dedicating the revenue to purchasing replacement stock.
Well, I've sent y'all some pictures of them, and one thing that everybody knows and should know, if you want to have a good number of livestock out there, you've got to have more girls than you do boys. Right now, we've got five bulls and one cow. The older ones have died off over time, so we didn't have them anymore. We got the one calf that we saved this spring, it's back out there now. We put her back out. She's actually in the elk pen right now, because.
Talking about Mandy.
Yeah, Mandy. Mandy Cuago, my wife's neighbor. We don't want to put her back. We don't want to put her back out there with five bulls, for obvious reasons. So, we'd like to, we'd like to declare those surplus and then come back in with some pure bred longhorns that are traditional livestock to the pioneer-type days that'll make that look a little bit better. And that's what we've, put the money back and we will just spend whatever money we get out of them back, back into livestock.
Questions, discussion? You're going to name, if you buy the vehicles, you're going to name them?
Yeah, we have to name them. They've got to have names. I don't know, Elmer. Elmer didn't go too well. We have much luck with Elmer, maybe we need to...
We just leave it, blow it up low.
I make a motion that we declare five white-touche longhorn cross bulls as surplus and dedicating the revenue to purchasing replacement stock, item 11.
Second.
I have a motion in a second.
Swager?
Aye.
Crone?
Aye.
Al Beedriss?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number 12 reports and comments from the city manager and council members.
I have no handouts tonight, but I do have a couple of things I'd like to mention. One is that our fire rescue crew is actively working in the Houston area, helping out with other crews from Oklahoma. And I think the last number I got from the fire chief is that they've helped evacuate almost 600 persons and rescued nearly 50 during their three days there. And I think they will start transitioning and hopefully we'll have our crew back in a week or so. But if you've watched any of the news, any of the photos, it's just incredible what they've encountered. Thanks for letting us do that. I think it was very important for us to send our crew. They went through a lot of training and I think they're putting all that training to good use. Second item is that we sent out a street condition survey to you. I hope you were able to look at it and get an idea of the condition of streets in our city. And I'd like to set a special workshop for the 28th of September and ask the consulting group, I am asked to come in and present that report formally to you and answer your questions about how we might think about funding some street improvements in the community. So, if we can schedule a workshop for the 28th of September, the last meeting, council meeting, typically, I'd like to do it from five to six prior to the meeting, if that's okay.
Can you get that hard copy?
Yes, we'll have hard copies for you. I didn't want to try to print it because I can't print the spreadsheet on my printer. It won't, it will, it wraps. And so, you get about five pages and you can't figure out which columns are on which page. Yeah, I couldn't do that. The other thing I wanted to mention is that recently IBTS, in conjunction with ICMA, did a special ebook report talking about our call center here in Guyman and the success of that call center, along with several other projects around the country. And hopefully, fairly soon, we'll have a news release regarding that project. And I'll, again, I'll give you a copy of the report at some point, but that entire report's about 85 pages, so I didn't want to try to color copy 85 pages. So, hopefully, we'll get some color copies through IBTS or ICMA and we'll hand them out to you. That's all I have.
All right. Any other reports, council members?
I have a couple, I have just had two here. I would like for us to research the way we handle deposits and the amounts to open and move utilities comparable to other cities our size, and also the ordinances compared to other cities our size.
Ordinances for what? Utilities?
No, I guess that would be more related to, it's going to be related to the option of permits.
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 Building permits.
Building permits.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Any other, second? Any other report on it? Okay, any new business? I will stand adjourned as Guyman City Council, reconvene as Guyman Utilities Authority. Before I do the consent agenda, item number three is public comments and announcements. Item number, agenda item number four is discussion on possible action on approval of invoice number CIV-1998 to Cardinal Engineering in the amount of $6,750 for the water well replacement program.
Both of these invoices for the two projects you approved recently and awarded contracts for, we have a pre-construction conference scheduled for September 11.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve invoice number CIV-1998 to Cardinal Engineering in the amount of $6,750 for the water well replacement project.
Second.
I have a motion in two seconds.
Crone?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Al Beedriss?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number five, discussion on possible action on approval of invoice number CIV-1997 to Cardinal Engineering in the amount of $11,500 for the lift station renovation. Any questions, discussion, motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve invoice number CIV-1997 to Cardinal Engineering in the amount of $11,500, item five.
Second.
I have a motion in a second.
Swager?
Aye.
Crone?
Aye.
Al Beedriss?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Any new business? Stand adjourned. Thank you everybody for attending. You're away.